Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire ox sits, which is to the left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies are over near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify him/her herself, give his or her address, and then present the case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all the public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Having said that, we do not have a public hearing on the agenda tonight, just so everybody At that, can we, Donna, can we call the first case?
Town Board referral upon the matter of request by Stantec Consulting Services, Inc., acting as agent for Providence Housing Development Corp. for rezoning application to rezone two parcels of land located at 4225 and 4250 Culver Road, tax account numbers 0621901-36 and 062.192-892 from R1 Residential to R5 Residential.
Good evening, board members. My name is Tom Palumbo from Stantec, offices at 61 Commercial Street, Rochester, New York, 14614. We're here this evening representing Providence Housing Development Corp. in their application for rezoning of 4225 and 4250 Culver Road from an existing R1 zoning to an R5 zone. As was stated, we're looking for your referral in that application. A little bit of history, in 2009, Providence Housing Development Corp. completed the construction of the Saint Saloms Apartments, which included the apartments at where the prior school used to be, as well as some townhouse cottages. We, as they've been running that out, that, those apartments, they've really noticed the need in the community for senior housing. When both churches came up for sale, it became a really good opportunity for them to try to help meet that need. That's part of their, really, their mission, so to speak. A little different with this project is that they'll also be working with Saint Anne's to provide services, and that should help the seniors age in place longer, and they'll also be working with folks in the community as well, not just residents. So, the application involves, as I said, two parcels, 4225 and 4250 Culver Road, that total about two and a half acres of land. The plan is to eliminate both the existing buildings, construct new, thirty, a thirty-unit, two-story building at 4225 Culver Road, that's on the, on the west side of the road, and then a forty-unit, three-story building at 4250, which is on the east side of the road. We, we've kind of planned it to really give us more of a village-like feel, buildings kind of to the road, you know, addressing the road, parking to the back, try to keep some pedestrian-scale green spaces available along the road, really, you know, entrances from the building to Culver, so it really kind of feels more village-like, as you, similar to what you'd see as you go a little further north into Seabreeze proper. We do see this as being a transitional zone from the more single-family properties to the south, to the commercial properties to the north. So we do see it as being very, in, in keeping with what we, what we read through the, through the comprehensive master plan for the town. We will, at 4250, the parking will be shared with the existing Saint Saloms Apartments. At 4225, they'll have their dedicated parking. We've, we, you know, we feel that the project will have a strong connection to the neighborhood. I mean, these are really important things for, for these residents. It'll have, you know, close proximity to bus service, there's some services that are walkable to the community, so we really think it's a, it's a really good location. We've had great success at, at Saint Saloms Apartments. We've got a really good wait list there, and we think this is going to be a very good, good service, both for the community members, as well as for the town in general. I guess with that, you know, my only other point was, we do try to provide some ample green space on the corners or at the nodes. That's kind of why you see some articulation in the buildings where we've planned them. But really, we're, that's, this site plan is really just to give you an idea where we, where we think the plan should go. We're really looking for the rezoning portion. We'll come back, you know, with site plan, workshop, site plan approval, site plan applications. So I guess with that, we could open it up for comment.
Sure. Is there anybody on the board who might have any questions regarding this case? Want to start with Brad?
Yeah, I have a question about the two existing structures on the two properties, the two churches. I noticed in the documentation that you provided that you got a letter from SHPO saying that neither of the two buildings had any historic significance, and I am wondering about that designation. I think that there is a wealth of other materials that should be looked at, and I wonder if that has been researched thoroughly, and if we're 100% certain that neither of those buildings have historic value to the community.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we got the SHPO letter, is we had to, you have to take pictures, make an application to them, because it's very important for any other funding, that they're not historically significant. If they are, we would have to, you know, modify our application for that. So they did, did go through some research on that, SHPO did follow through on that. We don't normally get, you don't get those letters lightly.
Sure. I, some folks on our Town Preservation Commission and the Landmark Society of Western New York have indicated evidence to the contrary, that perhaps we should reevaluate more carefully, and perhaps submit additional information to SHPO if they think that the determination might have been premature.
Okay. Let's share that information, we'll see what we have.
Absolutely.
You know, like, like we said, what we did, when we put the plan together, particularly for the Duran United Church of Christ side over there, we kind of looked at this, and in the architecture of the building, we tried to, to, you know, give credence to the prior building there.
I did notice, when I looked at the site, the existing new structure does reference the style of Saint Saloms nicely with the entrance, and whatever happens, I hope that perhaps the spirit of the buildings can be kept alive.
Exactly. Now, to just talk about that a little bit more, the Saint Saloms Church itself, the existing one, is a fairly modern building, so...
Yes, mid-century modern.
Yeah. Yep. As we get that, that data, we can follow that down through the site plan review process and go from there.
Thank you.
Any more, Brad?
Um, no, not at this time.
Mary?
What are going to be the hours the Saint Anne's is going to be in there?
My expectations are going to be there just during the daytime, like, you know...
So it could probably be like a daycare program?
Seven to five, it could be a daycare program, it could be some, some form, you know, programs for the folks that are there, you know, well-being programs, things like that.
Okay.
It's not like medical services overnight, stuff like that, yeah.
Okay, I'm all set.
Thank you. Michael?
I wanted to go back to, it's interesting that historical significance came up. I didn't really, I didn't think about it a lot. I looked at Saint Saloms and, and I didn't, but if that's, if that's a question hanging, are we ready to do this?
Well, I'm not understanding Brad's points. If, if SHPO has spoken on the issue and there's, there's a letter in place, I'm not sure that it's, it's an issue that's still open. They've made a determination that it's not a structure with historical significance.
All well and good, but he's, he threw this little bit of doubt here, and I want to know if that's a doubt that I need to address, or a doubt that I just cast behind and say, you know, full steam ahead.
Yeah, essentially, SHPO's addressed the issue by giving that letter to the applicant.
So can I build on your question? So if we decide to give a positive approval to the town board, can we make it conditional upon that being rechecked?
Yeah, I mean, what you could do, if, if the board's inclined to issue a positive recommendation on the referral, you know, perhaps as part of your findings, is you could say that that was an area of concern for this board, and that, you know, the town board should take a hard look at that SHPO determination as part of its consideration of the rezoning request.
Could we, if, if that's the case, and I, and I, and I read it that way, and it's fine, could we go back on our quote word, and if we say we recommend, but we find out that it's historical, can we just say, no, we don't recommend? Or, or is it a done deed once we say yea?
Or is it, is it a site plan issue?
It's not necessarily a site plan issue, this bears more on, on the rezoning itself.
Yeah.
And I understand why you're raising the question. Since this board is only in an advisory capacity, I would think that if you make your recommendation and you have findings of fact or, or conditions to that recommendation, the town board will look at those and consider those on your behalf in considering the underlying approval. I'm not sure that it needs to come back, or we would reverse a recommendation, but you could certainly build those in as findings.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Alan?
The, the use of the R5 has a lot of uses in the code. I believe that we discussed with the applicant putting a restriction onto that, that it would be a covenants of a certain amount of time. Are we still in agreement with that?
Yeah, we've, we've done the same, deed covenant for senior housing, just like we have at Saint Saloms Apartments now. We would do that again.
My recollection from the workshop is that that's a 50-year commitment from Providence?
I want to make you answer for a contractual issue. Mark Kreisberger, Executive Director of Providence, is also here.
Please state your name.
Yeah, my name is Mark Kreisberger, I'm the Executive Director of Providence Housing. The commitment we gave at Saint Saloms Apartments was a negotiated commitment between Providence and the town. The town was supporting the project with some of its CBDG funds as well, and it was a negotiation. Fifty was an agreed-upon number, it could be forty going, it doesn't, there's not a mandatory fifty, I guess is what I'm trying to say, but it is a negotiated number.
Okay, so we're still...
The, the offer of a deed restriction is still on the table.
Is that something that this board could send up as a recommendation?
You can include that in your recommendation.
Okay. That's all that I have.
Alan, how would you, I just want to capture a recommendation of...
I see no problem. I think that there's going to be some stuff on the site plan, but that's a month or so away for our, for my consideration.
Okay. Rich?
I agree, site plan issues, certainly there'll be a lot more to discuss. I think the most significant thing in the package is the September 15 letter, and a lot of what's detailed, it was submitted by Mr. Golin about the needs for this type of housing in the area, and the efforts this town has made to have more housing of this nature, so I don't have any questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Michael?
I don't currently have any zoning questions. I do want to, I do want to speak in favor, though I think it'd be a great use of this, this piece of property. That's all.
Thank you. I just have one question, Carrie, for you. What are some of the other uses of R5, just so we know?
I'd be happy to, to read that for you, hang on one second. I can grab it, thank you.
I can speak to it, Carrie.
Oh, you have it right there, perfect.
Yeah. So in R5, permitted uses as of right, single-family dwellings, churches or places of worship, private, or private nonprofit elementary or secondary schools accredited by the State Education Department, fire stations, farms, home occupations, private garages, public parks, swimming pools, multiple dwellings, and hospitals and nursing homes.
Thank you. Based on that, I don't think we have any more questions?
If I could just jump in back, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. I really want to be able to make a thorough evaluation of this rezone before I make a vote, and I really do believe that further evaluation on the historic significance of the two properties in question might be valuable. And I, in light of the additional information that came out today, which I'm definitely willing to provide, I'm wondering if that could be sent back to SHPO for further commentary, so that they have a full idea of what's there, or if we could have some time to have some feedback from our Town Preservation Commission?
Do we have the letter?
Yes.
From SHPO?
There was a letter in the packet, I believe it's dated July 7th, I'll double, I'll bear with me for a moment.
Oh, it's on the back, all right.
So, pardon me, it was dated June 6th, June 7th, 2016.
I see it right here.
I guess my question would be, if, if SHPO has issued this opinion, I mean, are you suggesting that they go back to SHPO and ask for another opinion?
Yes. When I spoke to them today and provided them with the additional documentation, they were, they, it was additional documentation that they didn't have at the time, that they made the determination of, of potential eligibility for a national or historic register. So even if the properties are determined, if they're eligible for, certainly they're not on the register, on registers now, but they could be eligible candidates. At the time, my understanding is that they decided that they were not eligible based on the data that they had. And our town is a little bit at a disadvantage, because we have not completed a town-wide historic resources inventory, and so they have little data to go on. And so, when I initially heard about the project, I didn't necessarily think too much of the sites. When I went for the site visit, that's when I started to question the nature of the two structures. Not necessarily that this would impede the development, or that we would try to save the structures, just that we had a hearty and well-thought-out conversation about them before we came to any conclusions about what we decided. And I know that Saint Saloms isn't particularly beautiful to many people, but it is a, a good example of mid-century modern design. And then the church across the street, Gothic Revival, and does have a rather unattractive addition that was put on the front, but from the architectural renderings that we looked at, it was, indicated that that was always part of the initial design, it's just that the church did not raise money to add that until much later. So that's why it differs slightly in style. When that information was shared with SHPO, they seemed to indicate that it might be interesting to reopen the document, not that it would overturn their decision, but that it would be a more thoughtful decision.
Let me ask you this, when you, when you called today, did you identify yourself as a member of the town planning board?
We talked, it was actually, it was actually moved through it forward through some contacts at the Landmark Society, and then she followed up with me on the phone, I indicated her that, about this meeting tonight, and that's why I was researching.
That's what I would want to know, did you indicate to her that this was before the planning board tonight?
Yes.
And that we're relying on a document that they issued on July, on June 7?
Yeah, initially, when we started talking, she wrote back and said, well, this is the determination that we had had, and they were initially going to stick with that. But then, when the documentation about, further information about the building came up, they indicated that they had not noticed that before, and that if the board or whoever was so inclined, we could request that it was reexamined. That's when I stopped.
But they, they didn't indicate, given the information you gave them, that the planning board was going to be making a, a decision tonight to go a recommendation one way or another to the town board? They didn't right away say, we want to issue a new letter, we want to be heard, anything like that?
Uh, no, they did not indicate that. They just said that it would be essentially some entity's decision to whether or not have that reopened.
Okay.
And so, you know, I don't, I can't speak on behalf of the board or anything like that, I was just trying to do my due diligence on my own hand to make sure that I was informed.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, I just, I just, I find it surprising that they would say, we might have interest in issuing a new decision, and you're going to be acting tonight as part of a planning board, but they didn't say, hold the presses, we'll send you a letter, we'll give you more information, or anything like that.
I think that the, what, my understanding of it is that it's our, it would be some entities' decision to ask them to go through the process of reopening. At this point, nobody, no official entity has on letterhead or anything like that asked them, say, hey, there's more documentation, should we reopen this? They were just acting on the official decision, apparently, that they have so far, which is that there's no evidence of historic structures there. But that decision, I believe, was predicated upon incomplete information through no one's real fault.
I have a quick question. Procedurally, what will happen then if that becomes the issue? If SHPO goes back in to make a new determination, can the board, town board request that? Can the planning board request it, or does the applicant need to request it?
My suggestion to this board would be that you issue your recommendation on the rezoning, positive, negative, with whatever commentary you want. It sounds like this is an area of concern for this board, potentially. So in a note or a comment to the town board, I would suggest, if they're so inclined, that they ask SHPO, you know, to revisit this issue if they want to, or if the applicant wants to get some clarification prior to the town board hearing, that might be, you know, something they wish to pursue. But I would leave it to the town board as the actual approving entity here, and say, you know, we had some discussion at the planning board level, there was some concern about the historical nature of this structure, it might be something you want to look at a little bit more closely.
So with that, is there any more questions for the applicant, so we can go to the next step?
May comment on the SHPO application? The determination made by SHPO was based on a fairly extensive application that they have, that we filled out, which had fairly detailed information on the site, pictures, dates of construction. It's hard to think what more the applicant can provide, the state, it may sound like you have new information that we, that they didn't require, or we didn't provide them, but I, I don't know what that information is, quite frankly.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide that to you. It's just newspaper clippings and renderings of the original buildings, indications of who the architects were, and other significant works that they've done in Rochester.
If you want to provide that to me, but I, quite frankly, I, I'm not sure that I would initiate another inquiry, because that's not part of, any part of their application for consideration of historical significance or not.
So everybody knows, as we do a, is there any more? I'm sorry, before. Okay, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is area to put conditions and/or suggestions on the positive or negative referral, so I would say at this point, unless there's any more questions, we go forward with either the positive or negative, and then either add suggestions or not, depending on what's going on.
I'm just, I'm just curious, if you go back to SHPO and ask them to reevaluate, and they come back and say, it's got historical significance, where are we then? Are we, I guess I'm just, I'm not, I'm not privy to that.
My understanding is that it may or may not impact our decision-making, so just because there's buildings of historical significance there doesn't mean that it can preclude any future development. It's just that, I think that it adds to the knowledge base, that you're making a fully-informed decision when you're deciding what to do. So, you know, it could inform the planning board's decision on how to move forward, perhaps during site plan review, whether we try to have the new structures match the integrity of the old structures, and style, and taste, or whether we try to have them incorporate pieces of the old into the new, or something like that. So it wouldn't necessarily mean that we try to save those buildings, but just that we have an informed opinion about what we're doing before we make those decisions.
And Mike, what I would add to that is, you know, whether it's a building of historical significance or not, it probably isn't, because SHPO has rendered a decision on the issue, and they, they render those decisions after a lot of diligence, and they don't do them lightly, but the role of this board wouldn't change, you're still in an advisory capacity to the town board on the rezoning. So if that's an area of concern for this board tonight, you could certainly address that in your recommendation, and that wouldn't change either way. The town board's going to consider it as part of its decision-making process. So any concerns that this board has, or any feelings in favor of the project that this board has, we should just pass them on to the town board to allow them to look at everything and make a decision on the rezoning.
And Mr. Chair, just one question, if we had concerns about the look of the project, so it did reflect the steeple, for example, we could make those recommendations during site plan?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. So any more questions for the board members? Okay, with that, does anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. And I'm open to friendly amendments. Upon the matter of request by Stantec Consulting Services, Inc., acting as agent for Providence Housing Development Corp. for the rezoning application to rezone two parcels of land located at two, or, I'm sorry, 4225 and 4250 Culver Road, tax account numbers 062.190136 and 062.19289.2 from R1 Residential to R5 Residential. I move that we make a recommendation, a positive recommendation to the town board, but include the restriction on, or the restriction on the use of the R5 to the current usage proposed by the applicant?
Do you mean a deed restriction, similar to Saint Saloms?
That we have the town board consider that for negotiations. I understand that we're not, we can't imply that.
So the way I would phrase it is that it's going to be rezoned R5. If the recommendation is that you want to restrict it to a limited use, that's going to have to be through a deed restriction. The town board couldn't say, we're going to rezone at R5 only for this use.
Right, okay.
So you can't put the recommendation?
You can put the recommendation that the town board consider a deed restriction, limiting the use of the property to, to a certain delineated use. But the town board wouldn't be able to, as part of the rezoning, say, we're going to rezone to R5, but out of the, you know, half a dozen or dozen permitted uses, you can only do two or three of them.
Okay. Any other amendments?
If I'm not clear on this, Brad, let me know, but my understanding is that we're going to ask the town board to readdress the SHPO issue regarding the original application, and how that deviates from the information found by Board Member Huber.
My suggestion would, to that, would be, if I can just...
Okay, that's why, that's why you're here.
Would be to encourage the town board to review the SHPO determination letter, and consider and compare it, compare and contrast it to the newly discovered information submitted by Planning Board Member Huber.
Just stepping back, do we have to do SECR on this first?
You do not.
We do not.
Just the town board.
The town board will do, will do SECR on the rezone application.
So the SECR form was provided to us, just as a guide?
It was, you got a whole copy of the entire application that the town board got to review as part of your referral. The town board will, in it, before it can take its action, will have to address SECR and do Part II and Part III for the rezone application.
So Part II, my question is, then they're going to be addressing the SHPO letter as part of the SECR anyway?
Correct. Yep. Correct, yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael. With that, can we get a vote? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. With that, we're all set, correct? Six aye, one nay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Staff, just address the two table items. There's two table items on the agenda, so Carrie, could you please address where we are with us?
I'd be happy to. So the first table item on the agenda is PB 1603-3, that is the application for Lighthouse Point, and I'll just provide you an update, the, since the, this board last met at the, for a public meeting, or the full, regular meeting, additional information had been provided, the city of Rochester had responded, and since, and actually just today, the applicant has provided information about what the delineation of just a town-only remediation would look like for the project, and so we're in the process of reviewing the environmental impacts and, and going over in, in great detail what that would entail so that we can provide some draft comments to the board, to this board for consideration for the purposes of completing seeker. Not yet ready, hoping to have that in short order. And so there's really no reason to bring it off the table.
So if it's not off the table, I know, Ellen, you're standing up, but I don't think procedurally that you can address the board. I'll double check with you, is that correct? Okay. Sorry.
Unless you want to.
I'll leave it up to the board. Anybody have any questions that you think?
No.
To add to it at this point? Thank you.
The, that last table item is PZB 1504-4, and that is the application related to 160 Densmore Road. You'll recall that the applicant had a geotechnical report submitted as a supplement to all the other material that had been provided as part of their seeker documentation. Since then, our town board, or town engineer, excuse me, has reviewed that information. They had some questions and clarifications that were needed, and Mike Chaffron, just late last week, was able to get ahold of the, the geotechnical engineer. This, this morning, Mike Chaffron indicated that he had spoken to James Barron, that, and that the geotechnical engineer is going to revise his report to adjust some of the units on the estimated permeability and the permeability tests completed by Land Tech, and that he was, he'll probably discuss things related to the rate water would emerge from the side of the slope, and these are the kinds of things that the town engineer needs to complete and provide to you, again, commentary or comments related to seeker so that you can really fully understand potential impacts and make your determination of significance. But again, not, not quite there yet, and hoping that that will be finalized and ready for this board to take up at the next public hearing.
Sure. Will, will we be addressing this at the next workshop?
We certainly can discuss it at the next workshop, it should, you should, I would hope and expect that we would have the information available for your review to, to go through it.
Sure, and will the town engineer be available?
He will, yep. So the town engineer and the town engineer, the engineer's environmental staff will be at the both meetings in October, so that any questions that you might have can be addressed with the experts in the room.
Thank you.
Not me. Actually, when it comes to water permeability, you want them answering those questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Carrie?
I'd like her to explain everything beyond the narrative.
Oh, sure. Let me get my flow charts out and my pointer so I can talk you through all of that.
If we could, we stated at the last meeting, we try to go through the minutes so we can clear these. I don't think you have to close, do we have to close? No. There's nothing opened. So with that, if we can look at the minutes that were, is everybody prepared to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Start with the minutes of March 28, 2016.
Ma'am? To my best, of my recollection, this reflects the meeting that I was in attendance.
I would make a motion for approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Minutes of April 25, 2016?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second? I was going to, can I, oh, I got, you vote on each one, or can I vote on?
I guess, but maybe.
Do you want to just entertain one motion for all of them?
I would like to, if the board's okay with that, I'd like to entertain one motion and then vote at the end.
Unless we get to bumping around.
Right. If anybody feels they need to.
You're doing good, Bernie, keep going.
I'd like to do it the easy way. May 23, 2016?
I was absent.
I was too, but I, I looked at the films, so it's okay.
Oh, I watched on TV.
So you're good?
Yes.
And June 27, 2016?
Motion.
Second.
I can second that one.
Oh, we don't have to do each one, right? So July 25, 2016?
Motion.
Any comments, any changes? Good. So regarding all of those minutes, do we have a motion to approve again, Rich?
So moved?
Your second? Rich, was that moved? Or Ellen?
Yeah.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any abstains?
Abstain.
Thank you. So with that, we close all the minutes.
Mark, April, May, June.
Correct. Would anybody like to entertain a motion?
Motion opposed.
I'll second motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Give the music.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Aronakoit Town Board on ICAT 12, Aronakoit's